We're ready, and I want to welcome everybody to the September 14th. I'm sorry. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the September 14th Verona Board of Education Public Meeting. The meeting is being called to order, and it is 7:11. And if everybody would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
The reading of the meeting notice. This meeting is being conducted in compliance with the open meeting session that the Verona Board of Education passed a resolution at its annual reorganization meeting held on January 5th, 2021. The meeting set forth the schedule of its regular meetings, which resolution was within seven days of passage. The schedule was sent to the Verona Cedar Grove Times, the Star Ledger, the Township of Verona, and the VEA. Postings of this meeting setting forth the time, location, and agenda were posted at the Verona Board of Education office and on the Verona Public Schools District website. The Verona Board of Education operates under a consent agenda format. Any board member has the right to have an item pulled to be voted upon or discussed separately. Copies of tonight's agenda and resolutions have been made available to the public and the press. Mr. Cruz, can you please do a roll call for attendance?
Is there all work?
Here.
This is Strappy.
Here.
This is Fresky.
Here.
This is Prescott.
Here.
Thank you. We have forum.
Thank you very much. And we are going to go right into the superintendent's report. There are no presentations for this evening, so Dr. Dean, you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Fresky. Good evening, everyone. Welcome back to school. This is our first board meeting this year since school began last week. And it's been wonderful to see all of our teachers returning and all the smiling student faces. We understand and we recognize the circumstances are different this year, but we certainly are very, very happy that we have full days. We have lunch going on, and our students and staff have been incredibly resilient and supportive in helping us kick off the school year. So congratulations on the first few days of school. A few updates this evening. One that we will continue to publicize from our building principals coming up on October 6th is International Walk to School Day. This event highlights, it's intended to create safer routes for walking and bicycling and emphasizes the importance of the issues of increasing physical activity, child safety, pedestrian safety, traffic congestion, et cetera. We encourage all of our families to participate across all of our schools, and there will be updates in the coming weeks and reminders from our building principals on this event. Referendum construction and HVAC units. At our last board meeting, Connor O'Brien, a project manager with Legacy Construction Management, presented to the public and to the board, 100% of the ventilation and heating components at our schools is now complete and operational prior to the start of school. The air conditioning project is ongoing and will continue during second shift work after school hours with contractors, and the expected completion is in fall of 2021. We have already, since the last meeting, air conditioning has been activated in certain schools in certain areas as the ECC, the contractor, and Mr. O'Brien is getting it up to speed, and they're able to make operational those sections. The same cleaning procedures are in place as we did last year during second shift work, which includes the coordination between the HVAC company and our custodial staff. And as a result, each evening, the contractors and our custodians will clean the rooms and have them ready for the next day. Since the last meeting as well, Legacy Construction Management has reported that the PSENG work at FN Brown is now 100% complete. The focus on September 7th and 8th of last week was on getting classrooms ready for the start of school as it relates to the HVAC project. Prior to students and staff arriving, since then, exterior gas piping for the rooftop units was completed at Lanning and Brookdale on September 19, 10. And then Legacy reported, as I mentioned earlier, air conditioning units are now operational in portions of HBW, and the plan is to continue with that progress in all of our schools. And as soon as the air conditioning project is able to be turned on in those designated areas, it will be. Moving forward, based on Executive Order 253 from Governor Murphy that came out several weeks ago, the district is collecting vaccination records for our staff. We had documentation of that last year for staff who volunteered that information. We are now actively soliciting and collecting that information as we are planning towards the deadline of October 18th, based on that executive order, in order to ensure that our staff members are covered through vaccination, and if they're not, that we will be following the testing procedures a minimum of one to two times a week. So in relation to that, one of the questions that comes up often is who's included as a covered worker that deals with schools? So that's a key component. So covered workers, as it's defined in the executive order, is not limited to. It's including but not limited to all administrators, all teachers, educational support professionals, individuals who provide food or custodial or administrative services, any consultant services on a regular basis, substitute teachers. And it also involves any contractors and contract providers who are in the buildings on a regular basis as well. So we are managing all of that in the collection of the vaccination verification over the next several weeks. We started that immediately, and we also have a process in place, and we are working towards developing a process in alignment with board policy and procedures that we will be implementing, as I mentioned, for COVID testing procedures for any staff member that is unvaccinated. In relation to testing, we know that testing is available, and depending upon whether someone needs to get tested because they feel like they've been exposed or it's precautionary to be able to scale up testing protocols. There are available sites that are free. Essex County, if you look on the Department of Health website that I've shared throughout the summer, we're very fortunate. We have a lot of free testing sites here. That's not common in some of the other counties across the state of New Jersey. So that's a huge advantage for us. What we also did as a school district is we recently registered with the New Jersey Department of Health for option one on end-to-end screening testing program. And what essentially that does is that will provide our school district with onsite testing at one of our schools by a state contracted vendor at no cost to the district. So the purpose of that is for us to parlay and partner with the state and taking advantage of the federal funds that will be coming from the federal government to school districts that opt in. The deadline was yesterday for the program. We signed up last week in order to make sure that as we are collecting vaccination records from our staff, any staff members that do not get vaccinated and are required to go through testing, that we have an option available, and we mitigate and minimize the cost to our staff members. And we're trying to make it as simple as possible and see if we can have a location here onsite. So that's what this program offers. So the comprehensive service that we will be able to receive as the Department of Health outlines, and this was communicated from the Department of Education to superintendents a few weeks back. The service will include at a minimum the implementation, the management, the staffing, the equipment, and the daily operations needed to operate the school testing clinics, including all the required reporting. The district will provide, we will be able to provide further details in the coming weeks as we continue to partner with the state and we receive more information. At this point, this testing is going to be primarily for our staff, but we also will have this available. It's also possible for our students as well. So as we continue to develop policies and procedures and the management of this, there's a lot that goes into it, and we have a few weeks before we have to finalize those plans. And we just want to make sure that we're covering all of our bases and we're communicating with all of our stakeholders so we have a good, tight plan in place. And in regards to the operation of our facilities, our principals and our teachers have been doing an excellent job with our lunch aids around lunch and recess. We do recognize that the temperatures are going to get warmer from time to time. We know that tomorrow is one of those days that looks like it's going to be a little bit warmer. We do monitor the weather conditions on a regular basis, on a daily basis, hourly as well, so we can see where the peaks are. Sometimes the peaks are coming much later in the afternoon. The conditions in all of our rooms are different. It depends on if they're east-facing or west-facing the time of the day, the humidity levels. Our principals are the first point of contact, and they work with our teachers in an effort to make sure that our teachers have accommodations for spaces. So one of the things that we're going to be doing, and we typically do when we have these warm events, these warm days coming, is we will be leaving the windows open several inches in each room overnight. That helps tremendously because it allows for that air circulation, cool air to be in the rooms. So that way, when teachers and students come in in the morning, the rooms are comfortable longer throughout the day. Another thing that our principals do is they coordinate with our staff to find cooler learning spaces and to rotate students through. Sometimes it's teachers taking turns and going into perhaps a gym that's not air-conditioned, but it's cooler, going outside into a shady area, utilizing common spaces like a multipurpose room that's air-conditioned, or a library, and coordinating those efforts. So our principals are working closely with our teachers on that. Masks are still worn indoors. There are exceptions, obviously, with eating and drinking, and there are except exemptions during extreme heat. But with students being very close to each other in less than six feet, the concern is taking masks off. The virus does not know whether it's warm or not. So we need to be very, very mindful around wearing the masks. So that is an absolute last resort. We have had conversations around whether or not we may be able to utilize fans. The Montclair Health Department will not and has not advised us and would not give us. We've had multiple conversations with them. They will not give direction on that. We are in communication with the teachers' union in regards to finding out and hearing from them what their thoughts are on that, in order to make sure that we're having that collaborative, open dialogue regarding the health and safety and well-being of our staff and obviously of our students on whether or not we're going to be using those fans. We've had productive dialogue, and we're still waiting to hear back as far as getting finalization. So the dialogue is ongoing. And then last but not least, before I turn it over this evening to Mr. Cruz, who does have a business administrator report to share with us, I'd like to just share that congratulations are in order this evening. And the congratulations are in order this evening for Frank Moriello, our Director of Special Services. Mr. Moriello is here with us this evening, as he is at many and most of our meetings. Today was a monumental day for him. And the reason it was a monumental day is because he successfully defended his dissertation and his doctoral studies at St. Peter's University. So I'd like to publicly congratulate Dr. Moriello on this wonderful, wonderful accomplishment. The dedication, the commitment that's required to follow through and to be a lifelong learner, and certainly to model for our students and for our staff, being passionate about pursuing that learning. So congratulations, Dr. Moriello, and thank you for your service to the district. And that concludes my superintendent report, and at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Cruz for the business administrator report.
Thank you, Dr. Dean. So I'm gonna turn over. We're gonna present. So give me one second, just so that we have the presentation up. Yeah, this is on. Let me, I'll bring this closer so you guys could hear me. Okay. All right. So good evening, everyone. So this presentation, I believe it's not, I don't see it on Zoom yet. You guys see it up in the audience? Okay. There's been a few questions that have been coming up regarding school meals. And the purpose that the business office prepared this presentation is to answer some of those questions and give you everyone some context over that, especially this year, since it's pretty unique. You know, as we actually move forward from a year of a lot of challenges, and as we can all agree today, nutrition is something that is a critical component in offering a learning environment for our students to actually thrive in, and that's something that we believe here in Verona. So that being said, I just want to talk a little bit about what the National School Lunch Program is and actually give some information about what we do here in Verona and what the program is currently offering and telling. So the National School Lunch Program is a federal program by the USDA, offering meals to students, predominantly students who are low income, that are eligible to receive free lunch. So what is that eligibility criteria? And that criteria basically means that the student's family, the household income falls below 130% of the poverty level. So historically, looking at the last three years here of Verona, less than 1% of our students actually meet the eligibility. And as you see in this chart, this is actually the total number of students that are actually eligible for free meals. And because Verona doesn't participate in the National School Lunch Program, the board picks up the bill for that, for the national, for those students. So all the students that you see that actually apply and are eligible based on the income requirements, they do actually receive free meals all year long, and we never deny a meal to anyone. Even if, for whatever reason, a student comes in and says that they don't have the money for it, we always, from the business office standpoint, we always never deny. So our service provider is Pomtonian, and they already, the manager that actually runs the program here in all school buildings, they actually have that message. And as long as the families fill out the application form, it gets vetted, and we actually approve and submit a form letting them know that they got approved for the free meals based on the eligibility. So there's a lot of chatter now about the free lunch. So the family of First Coronavirus Response Act provided meals during the pandemic, and then even this school year, it got extended. So every school district, regardless of eligibility, as long as they're participating in the National School Lunch Program, they are able to get free meals. So the question is, what does that mean, right? So when we look at free meals, it sounds great. So the National School Lunch Program, if we wanted to, we would have been able to apply and actually get free meals for every single student in Verona. But what is the cons? There are some cons with that. The first piece is that it will limit our menu options. We will no longer be able to offer a la carte menu items. Second, the portion size is significantly smaller. Third, soft drinks and any type of Snapple beverages, which is actually popular here at the high school, that will actually also get eliminated because we will have to offer non-soft drinks and actually diet based on the USDA guidelines. And then lastly, the SCA will no longer be able to fundraise using meals. So that will mean that Brookdale won't be able to sell meals, and all the food will have to go through the NSLP program. So that's basically the big picture in that regard. The one thing is that when we look at this, free meals, as a father, my first reaction, having two girls in public education, is great. But to be honest, when you look at the quality of the meals you're serving, it paints a different picture, especially if a child is actually denying or refusing to eat a meal because they don't like the quality or the type of meal that's being served. So right now, what you see in front of you is the meals that we provide here at Verona. So this is actually the meal option, the menu option, that the middle school and the high school actually receives. So what you see is actually Pizza Ria Pizza. You actually have the different types of a la carte meal options that a student could actually choose and have a variety of options as a meal program. On this picture right here, a lot of, even the snacks, we won't no longer be able to sell. So we're talking about potato chips. It will have to be baked chips. Won't be the brands that kids are used to. It will also eliminate cookies, muffins, things that will actually no longer be allowed under USDA. Anything that's actually fried, like french fries, onion rings, that will also, it will have to be baked items. So that will also impact what's being offered to students. So right here, this is actually a picture of what National School Lunch Program meals looks like. And this is the same provider. This is Pomtonian. So Pomtonian offered the picture that you saw previously is what is being offered here at Verona. And this is actually what's being actually served at National School Lunch Program at another district nearby. So that concludes the presentation for today. Any questions, anyone?
Thank you, Mr. Cruz. Were there any questions on this end? I know, I'm turning on my mic right now. Thank you. I'd like to just put my teacher hat on quickly. I do lunch duty in a school district that does participate in the FFCRA program. We have a much larger population of students that qualify for the free and reduced lunch program. And we throw out anywhere from 100 to 150 lunches a day. Sometimes they're just not used, and sometimes it's because the students open them up, and they take two bites, and they go, I don't like it, and they eat the applesauce. Like today was cheeseburgers. I don't want it because there's no ketchup. But because of the food service program, because of the restrictions, dietary restrictions around the program, they won't provide ketchup because it's high in sugar. So I do understand, and I see firsthand, like what the food, the quality of the food is that comes in from like a kid perspective. But then, if I take off my teacher hat and I put my mom hat on, and I think about my community at large, and I think about, okay, well, maybe this is just a really, really small inconvenient sacrifice that we, as a really close-knit community, that our kids and our students could maybe make for those small population of students that really need this. So, I mean, I personally think that this is something that we should definitely, you know, look into much further and apply for. That's just my personal opinion. But I also want to thank you for giving us such a detailed presentation because that has never been done before. And I really appreciate all the information, and it has allowed me to sort of, in my own personal mind, make a more informed decision. So thank you.
Hello? It's supposedly on. I'll just scream. I just wanted to, you know, confirm. I mean, thank you for the presentation. And I wanted to confirm, is there a way, is there a way to do a trial period, like a test period? They didn't allow that. It's either all in or all out?
So unfortunately, with the National School Lunch Program, it's a commitment for the entire school year. So if we were to go into the National School Lunch Program, it would be meaning that for that entire year, we will be bound to the restrictions. And then also, there will be audits with the USDA on Pomtonian to ensure that the quality is actually meeting their standards and that they're not serving other options that they shouldn't be serving under the National School Lunch Program.
Sorry. Okay. Thank you very much.
I would just like to ask one question. Is there a way, if this is something the community is really, you know, looking for and needs, and we can provide, is there a way we can survey the entire community to get feedback and see what the numbers are and go from there, to start at least? Just to get an idea, are we talking?
Yes. So I think that's a great idea. Initially, so when I first saw the response and that was coming in for some concerned parents, I actually felt the same way. But then, today, I actually put on the student hat, and I actually walked into the cafeteria and actually spent 20 minutes with Pomtonian and their staff and actually seen and talking about the quality and the changes because they also even were able to share the numbers of how many students are actually buying a National School Lunch type. And actually, even yesterday, they actually shared the number. Only 10 students brought a National School Lunch type of meal yesterday in the middle school versus 199 are buying the other a la carte options, like Pizza Ria Pizza and some of the other dishes that you saw, like chicken parm, spaghetti. So those things, it is a big piece. When I saw those numbers today, honestly, I said, the students should have a voice also. So if the student council or some type of committee within the body, especially in the middle school and the high school, I think they should have a say because as a student, you're actually coming into your school environment. That's going to change the way you see your school when tomorrow, all of a sudden, your meals are just completely different. So I think it's a big decision. It's not just, from a financial sense. I think it was, my business hat a few days ago was like, okay, yeah, it's a no-brainer. It's free meals. All of Veronian families are saving, but honestly, we're giving up a lot. There's a lot to give up, and it's not an easy decision. The other thing to point out is that the students that qualify for free meals, they are receiving free meals. So they're receiving quality meals, and they're receiving free meals that the board is actually covering 100%. Thank you.
And I'll just add off of that as well. So thank you for that and for the presentation, Mr. Cruz. One of the things that you mentioned earlier as well, which is an impact to, and goes off of what Mrs. Prescott just shared in regards to how do the parents feel about it? Because it sounds great on face value, but we have Pomtonian lunch at all four elementary schools. Brookdale solely has, I'm sorry, has SCA lunch solely. Brookdale solely has Pom, I'm sorry, has SCA lunch solely at Brookdale School. And at our other schools, it's a combination of Pomtonian and the SCA. So the SCA lunches would disappear entirely. So Brookdale would have Pomtonian every day and all of the other schools would have Pomtonian every day. And there's that fundraising stream as well as a trade-off. So all of those factors are definitely, what makes it challenging? It's it's, if it were that easy, then we would have done it. So lots to consider.
You're welcome.
I also think it's important for the public to know that on our website, across the top tabs, there's a parent resources tab. So anybody? Oh. Oh, okay. Can you hear me now? So on the parent portal, on the parent resources tab on our website, the form to apply for reduced or free lunch is up there year-round. So it's a rolling, a rolling process, so it's not that there's a deadline. So any families at any point within the school year who need to opt in for that can do that, and that's where it's found. The form is on there, there's directions on there, there's a brochure that explains it all on there. So I think that's important to know as well. And maybe that's something that we could push out at different times during the year because there's families moving in, moving out, and it's always a new population. So.
One of the things also that I'll add, as as you mentioned, as families move move in, we've made this form, it's part of the registration packet as well. So of course, it's impossible for us to know what a family circumstances are, and so that's part of the registration packet. So if a family is registering in the middle of the year, or anytime for that matter, they'll be able to have access to that form to be able to submit it to the business office.
So if somebody loses their job tomorrow, they could potentially apply, depending on their financial status?
Yeah, it's available at all at all the time. I'm sorry, you have to just save your comment for the end for public comments. We can't do a back and forth with the audience. Thank you. We're going to roll into committee reports, moving on with the agenda. We have athletics and co-curricular, which is Mrs. Prisco and Mr. Alworth.
Thank you, Mrs. Fraschy. Yes, Mr. Alworth and I met with Mrs. Pamrazzi for Pamrazzi, am I saying her last name correctly? I'm Italian, you'd think I would get this by now, but it was a brief meeting, but just to go over two quick items that are somewhat important. The busing situation that she's coming into facing is there's not a lot of bus drivers. So for sporting events, field trips coming up, whatever it is, there could be issues with busing. The other day, they had to make, the bus driver had to make two trips on the smaller bus to pick up the varsity, drive them to here, drive them to Belleville, come back, drive the JV to Belleville and back. So just to put the word out to the families that this could potentially be an issue. A game, a coach may ask for parents to drive their childrens to a sporting event if there is, you know, a problem going forward. So she is very concerned, she is working, calling, researching every bus company and every option out there. So she's working very hard. She's ver, she was very stressed about it.
And it is, it's not just a Verona issue, it's a it's a statewide issue. All the schools are struggling with buses. I know my school is, I think, the majority of schools having a major bus shortage.
Well, and it's really not cheap to get a school bus either. I don't, I think she said the cost is around $400 for a school bus. I think when I was in school, it was maybe like 90, so. And then the other issue is the masks for indoor sporting events, just to, you know, make sure that the spectators are all wearing their masks indoors during sporting events. I did visit the girls volleyball game before coming here today against Melbourne, and it looked like everyone in the stands was following the mandate. So just, that was it. I don't think there was really anything else.
That was it. Yes, please wear your masks.
Thank you very much. And the education committee, I believe, met as well, and that's Mrs. Joffe and Mr. Alworth.
Hi, yes, we met briefly on Friday afternoon. It was just Mr. Alworth and I. We really only discussed two things. The first one was adding in a live stream option for our meetings going forward. I don't want to speak for Mr. Alworth, but I think that personally, that that should be something that we do going forward. In looking at a lot of the districts around us, Caldwell is in-person and live stream only. Cedar Grove is in-person, and I believe they're live live stream or they just do recorded. Glen Ridge is in-person and live stream, just starting, I think, at this most recent meeting, they only went to live stream. So a lot of the towns around us are doing that. I know Maua is doing that, some of our, like, districts are doing that as well. I just feel like that's kind of the direction that the whole world is going in. I would like to recommend that, Tim. I don't know if you want to speak?
Yeah, I know you didn't want to speak for me, but we, as we discussed on Friday, I completely agree. I think I think it's 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 an easy way to get get the meeting out to more people.
Yeah. And then we also talked about the use of Google Forms to allow the public to reach the board a little bit more effectively. And the form would look something similar to what some other towns are doing. I'm just looking at the data and just trying to see. There's a few other towns around us. I think Glen Ridge uses it, Fairlawn uses a Google Form, that the board would get directly, and it would allow us to do two things. First, there's a button that you can, or a checkmark that you can make that will allow us or ask us to put your comments or questions directly into the minutes, and that makes it really easy to do so. Because that's just a copy and paste at that point. And it also allows us to use our committees a little bit more effectively, where the committees themselves can try to answer the questions that are posed. I think also, something important to remember, though, is that when the questions come in, and this is something Tim and I discussed, is we thought that, you know, the initial answer to any question, you know, any question, I guess, if it's appropriate, would be, did you contact the teacher, the principal, and/or the supervisor in that order to find an answer to your question? And if so, you know, in order to best better facilitate this conversation, we would need to see what those answers were and what that conversation looked like to help you find an answer as well. And I think that would be a more direct line to the board. But that was just something that that came up at our meeting, so. And that's it. Oh, and that and that Google Form would go right on the Board of Education page, right at the top, for easy access.
And just to add to that, Sarah, I know we also spoke, I know you spoke with the other board members about the live stream options, and I speak for myself, I'm in agreement with the live stream. As always, the first line of, you know, we love to be able to have to have the public be able to see the live stream, but also, when it comes to the the forms, the first line of communication should always be with your teacher, with your principal, and the supervisors. And then the Google Form's an option as the next step to be able to connect with the board if there's something related to that. But, you know, our 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 goal is to rather than wait for the board meetings to address questions that could be addressed by the administration, you know, the idea is to have everyone email or contact the administration first, and then the Google Forms will be a way to, if it's something more specific toward the board, a way to communicate with us. And of course, then, you know, the other way for folks to ask questions is to be here in person. And thank you for the audience that came tonight. And again, we're trying to be transparent and and open up what's going on at board meetings for those folks. Maybe you have games tonight, I know there's a bunch of games that are going on tonight, and the live stream will give them an option, be able to see what's going on at the board meeting.
So I just want to clarify, with the live streaming, there would be no live participation? It's just watching the board meeting?
Correct. That's what a lot of these other districts are doing. It's just a live stream option, and so you can see it in person.
Yeah.
Through, you know, your phone or computer or whatever.
In real time.
Right, right.
Yeah, because I know Mrs. Prisco had done some research for us, and she looked at 23 different school districts around, and it was about a half and half split. Out of that, 11 of them were strictly in-person only, and there was eight districts that had a mix of in-person and live streaming. And there were only three districts that actually had audience participation through the Zoom. So it really is a split, so. I think that is important as well. So if the the whole board feels that they want to just live stream with no participation and, you know, have public comment for in-person, or like you said, with the Google Forms, that's a reasonable halfway point. This is going to be for public comments on agenda items only. So if anybody has a comment on any of the resolutions that are being voted upon tonight, that would be that time. And if not? No, it's it's not an action item. So at this point, we're going to close the public comments on agenda items, as there is no public comments, and open it up for any discussion items from the board. New or old business that you wanted to revisit. The two things that I want to add for discussion items is I just want to remind everybody that next Wednesday, October, not next Wednesday, is it next Wednesday? No. October 6th, two weeks, is Walk to School Day. So I would encourage, you know, the elementary schools usually do a good job, people gather on their blocks, you know, maybe 20 minutes before school and have a big showing of Walk to School Day. So I want to put that out there. And the other thing, I was contacted by the Verona Environmental Commission, asking to put a reminder out that there's no idling. So when you're going to school to pick up your students or waiting at games, to please just shut the cars off and not idle. I also wanted to do a quick update on our interim superintendent search. So we did a lot of recruiting. We had a candidate pool of, there were 14 people who responded, and out of the 14, there were 11 candidates that had full and complete applications. The board went through all those resumes, cover letters, their whole bodies of work, and narrowed that down to the top five choices. And out of those top five, one of them rescinded for personal reasons. So we did, last Thursday on September 9th, we had a special meeting and we did first round interviews with that. So there has not been any action taken yet, but that's where we're at with the interim search. So hopefully, within the next week, we will have more information on that. Are there any other discussions? Nope? All right, we're going to move on.
Hold on, I'm just unmuting. I was just, I was just trying to look on my phone for the email that just came out today from Dr. Moriello. I believe he sent it out, right, for September 30th? I just wanted to make a reminder about that date. That is very important. That's going to be 7 o'clock for mental health presentation here.
Yes, on September 30th, here at the Verona High School Auditorium, from 7:00, 8:30, we have Dr. Kelly Moore. She's going to be speaking. She's the first speaker in our parent training series through Rutgers Behavioral Developmental. She'll be speaking about supporting your child after the pandemic. You know, it's also good to note that over the next couple of weeks, I'm going to be sending out other flyers in regards to the other speakers that are going to be coming and that are, at our board meeting at the end of September, I'll be doing a presentation on our current mental health programming and our new initiatives that are being put forth this year. So I'm hoping that we could get a great turnout for that, so that everyone can see the great things that we're doing mental health-wise. Thank you, Mrs. Prisco.
Dr. Moriello, I have a quick question. It has a nice ring to it, Dr. Moriello. It's come right off the tongue, right? So I guess this presentation's being held on at the same time and date as the HBW Back to School Night. And I mean, it's disappointing on a personal level, because I wanted to, I wanted to, obviously, need to do both, I want to do both. Is it going to be recorded and then we can watch it at a later date?
Yes, so so that the community knows, the HBW Back to School Night is pre-recorded, so it, they can watch that link at any time. So if they want to get out of the house and come to a presentation and go to their HBW link at a later time, they can do that. But everything for the Back to School Night, for the HBW presentation for Back to School Night, will be pre-recorded, so they can click on the links of their teachers and those type of things. You know, when I researched this out, this was the only time we were able to get Dr. Kelly Moore. I didn't want to mess up the sequence of the parent training. So, you know, I, we did realize that conflict was there. Parents that have reached out to my office, I've shared the same comment in regards to, it's a pre-recording with the HBW Back to School Night, so they can access that at any time.
Thank you. I mean, from what I hear, because of her status in the mental health community, there's a lot of buzz about her coming to our town. I expect a good announcement.
And we also shared it with our two bordering towns, Glen Ridge and also Cedar Grove. So we'll see if we can get people to come out. But it will be recorded also and put on our website.
Thank you very much. Moving on with our agenda, we are going to do a vote on the resolutions. So I need a motion to approve Resolutions Number 1 through 8. Move by Mr. Day. Second. Second by Mrs. Joffe. And is there any discussion? I just wanted to make a correction, Mr. Cruz, on the confidential minutes for September 9th. That ended at 9:05, and I believe it said 5:05. So we could correct that. And then on the August 31st minutes, the word "acting" needs to be removed from the Board Secretary. I think that was a holdover from when Mr. Turner was here. And let me see. And then I had a question on Dr. Dionisio, on the policies, when you were speaking about the vaccines. So in that, if I read it correctly, that includes volunteers as well. You didn't mention volunteers, and I think that it that it did include it.
Volunteers are included in that, correct.
Great. Any other discussion on items?
I would just like to briefly discuss the updated policy, dress and grooming policy number 5511. I emphatically approve this dress code policy change. And just to kind of summarize what it says, for those who have not had the opportunity to read it, our old dress code mentioned things like dresses and skirts must be shorter than four inches, leggings may be worn under skirts, but skirts must fall into the above category, large holes in clothing may not be allowed. And happy to say that that has been eliminated from our dress code, I think, making it much, much more equitable. And really, the dress code just focuses on not allowing any clothing, apparel, or accessory that indicates a student has a membership or affiliation with any gang, criminal activities, promotes alcohol, tobacco, or drug abuse. And that in, and it's really all about safety now, like, be careful about jewelry in gym class and making sure you're wearing the right shoes for gym, you know, and that everything can be stored in lockers safely if you need to. And that grooming practices and clothing that presents a health or safety hazard to the individual. hazard to the individual student or others materially interfere with schoolwork or create disorder. Um, I guess that, that's a little bit vague. That was the only concern I had about that language. Um, but really, it's just a focus on safety now, not targeting females in particular, or males if they choose to wear skirts above their knee. So I'm happy to see that. So thank you.
And if there's no more, just, if there's no more discussion on any items, I'm gonna ask Mr. Cruz to please do the roll call.
Mr. Alw.
Yes, if I'm, if, sorry, I have a question. If I'm saying no to policy 0167, I say no to that whole resolution. Is that correct?
So if it's only to win, uh,
No individual.
On that policy? Okay. No on policy 0167. Yes to all other resolutions, 1 through 8.
Okay. Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mrs. Strappy?
Yes.
Mrs. Freski?
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
We have coram. Motion passed.
Excellent. Thank you. And then I need a motion to accept addendum resolutions number one through six.
So move.
Moved by Mr. Day.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Prisco. Is there any discussion on those? No. If not, I'm gonna ask you, Mr. Cruz, to please do a roll call.
Thank you. Uh, is there all work? Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mrs. Strappy?
Yes.
Mrs. Freski?
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Motion passed. We have calm.
Excellent. Thank you very much. And at this point, we will open it up to public comments on any topics. And please give your name and address when you approach the podium. And it's a five-minute limit per person.
Hello. Rita Scolfo, 25 Church Street. Uh, I just wanted to thank all the teachers and admins for the first few days. It was, and is continuing to be a big transition, going back to full-day school. But I can tell all the effort that's gone into it. And it is so exciting at the end of the day to hear the stories of the kids from beginning to end and all the in-between that they have stories to come home to because we've been apart from each other for a little bit. Um, so thank you for all that. In particular, while this weather is nice, it's great having the kids get outside for recess and lunch. But I do have a kindergartner and I'm concerned about the sustainability through the winter and the cold weather months when they are sitting at their desk all day. So from what I'm hearing, specials are still, other than gym, at their desk. On a bad weather day, lunch will be at their desk, recess will be at their desk. I think it's really hard to imagine my kid getting through December, January, February, March from 8:30 to 2:45. And I wonder what his mental health will be at the end of this. As adults, it would be really hard for us to sit that long at a desk. So my question is, why are middle school students who aren't vaccinated able to go to different lunchrooms or different rooms as though these kids would go to specials? And why, I know at Lanning, some students were able to go to the library for, so a whole grade was able to go to the library for recess, but individual classes are not allowed to go to the library for a class. So I wanted some insights into why these young students aren't afforded the opportunity to get a change of pace, a new area, because it's really boring and it's really hard for them to sit there all day long. So I was just looking for insight into how these decisions were being made. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you for your question and we'll address the questions at the end. So if anybody else needs to come to the podium.
Sorry, is that okay? I'm too short. Um, hi, Kristen Donahue, uh, 31 South Prospect Street. Um, I also wanted to thank all the teachers, admin, everyone who has worked so hard to get our kids back into school, um, the full day. It makes such a difference, at least for my children. Um, you know, they're, they're a lot happier. Um, you know, just having kind of more of a normal school experience. So I'm incredibly grateful that, um, you know, we are in this position at this point. Um, as far as the Zoom option for the Board of Ed meetings, um, certainly appreciate a live stream option. That's definitely moving forward. But to be honest, I don't think this is a difficult lift at this point. You know, we're already recording these meetings, so making them live stream, I don't, I don't see that as a really big accomplishment, frankly. Um, not allowing for public comment is still a barrier to true participation and engagement. Meeting halfway should not be the goal. Community engagement and participation should be the goal. Um, my question for this is, when will this decision be made and when will the public be informed about it? Uh, my second comment is about the fans. Um, looking at New Jersey's Road Forward Health and Safety Guidance for the school year, um, 2.3 on page nine, improving airflow, using child-safe fans to increase the effectiveness of open windows, safely secure fans in a window to blow potentially contaminated air out and pull new air in through other window, open windows and doors, use fans to increase the effectiveness of open windows, position fans securely and carefully in near windows so as not to induce potentially contaminated airflow directly from one person over another. Strategic window fan placement and exhaust mode can help draw fresh air into the room via open windows and doors without generating strong room air currents. My question is, why do we need to wait for the Montclair Board of Health guidelines when we have guidelines from the New Jersey Department of Health? So that's a little bit unclear, but those were my, my key questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Denise Berzella, 130 Personette Avenue. Approximately 42 million people in the U.S. suffer from food insecurity. More than 1.2 million are in New Jersey. In Verona, the Holy Spirit Food Pantry served 140 people in August and that number is not decreasing. The maximum income for a family of four in New Jersey to receive school, preschool lunch is around $48,000. That's about $22 to $23 per hour. Two parents working, two, two parents working minimum wage, full-time jobs in New Jersey would make more than $48,000. According to newjersey.com, out of 686 possible school lunch sponsors in New Jersey, 603 participated in the preschool lunch program last year. That's about 89% of those sponsors that could. Everyone benefits from offering free school lunches. Those that qualify are less stigmatized. Those that may not qualify by the barest of margins are now able to go with food. It's all well and good that people say that, you know, the administration says we will always feed a child who does not have food. But to a child who does not have food, to actually have to go and ask or go online knowing they are not able to pay for what they're choosing is stigmatizing, embarrassing, and frankly, inhumane. It's, it's, it is. I asked that the board immediately opt into the free school lunch program. Yes, you, we saw the pictures, but we also looked at other school districts that offer the free school lunch program. School districts like Montclair, Caldwell, Cedar Grove, Livingston, and their menus were almost exactly the same as our menus. So to say that, well, they won't get everything. You know what? If my kid doesn't get a piece of pizza, that's fine. If the kid next to her can eat chicken nuggets. I don't care. And I think most parents don't care. It, it, it just does not make sense to take advantage of this program during a time when many families are struggling, even families that in the past have not struggled. Whether it's job loss, overtime loss, or whatever, their families struggling in Verona. My second comment is, um, at the August 31st meeting, it was mentioned that the Board of Ed has one direct employee, the superintendent. So it's very important that the search for this employee be transparent and as public as possible, understanding there are aspects of it that cannot be public and should not be public, to be quite frankly. Um, but what can be public and what should be public is the actual discussion as to the qualities that the board will be seeking in a superintendent. Those qualities can be discussed at public meetings, whether it's a doctorate or not a doctorate, whether it's experience, not experience. Those aspects can be debated and discussed at public session and should be. And the, the public should be able to comment on what's important to them. I think that's about it. Um, but thank you. I appreciate your time. And, uh, thank you for all the teachers and administrators and staff and everybody. Uh, my very weepy middle school kid came home happy. So that's always a good thing. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
He's always so tall. Lisa Friedman, 54, Wills and Dow. I was just, I came in to comment on Verona not participating in the free lunch program. As a former, you know, Verona junior president, there were so many families that we had to contribute and help over the years that don't qualify. As someone who ran the SDA lunch programs at Lanning, there were so many kids who were there, who didn't pay for it, who didn't, families didn't sign up for the lunch, who we went ahead and fed, who we were told numerous times that we couldn't fed feed because their families did not fill out the paperwork for the lunch program, yet these kids came to school with a jukebox, juice box and like a bag of crackers in their lunch as we're serving out like pasta that's, you know, kids are getting 17 bowls of. And I'm like, no, I'm going to feed that kid. If he gets yelled at me later, it's not fair. But, you know, I mean, I pulled up Cedar Grove, I had Cedar Grove Board of Ed while we're sitting in this meeting, send me their lunch program, which is from Pomtonian, which is what they have and what they have offered at the high school. Sorry, I can't read with my glasses on, actually. And their available daily items are assorted grab and go sandwiches, assorted specialty pizzas, all white chicken meat tenders with dinner roll, and fries, crispy chicken sandwiches on a roll, spicy chicken sandwiches on the roll, assorted grab and go salads, meat lunch, a farm stand where kids can pick various items or fruit every day. Like to say that it's the menu items that you put up there on your own were very limiting and not actually what Pomtonian is fully offering as we can see in other districts that are fully participating in this program. My family is not, you know, I'll say, we don't, it's, doesn't matter to me. But when I've seen and been the parent on the end, seeing these kids, that it does matter to, that it does qualify for. That means that my kid maybe doesn't have a chocolate chip cookie at lunch and can either bring one from home or have one later after school, but there's maybe 10 or 15 kids that can eat, or 10 or 15 families that that extra hundred to $200 a month because their kids are eating for free can mean the difference between, oh my God, something happened to my car and I can get it fixed and get to work now because of what's going on. Right now, a little grace and a little compassion towards our families overall in our district should be coming from us as the whole, should be coming from the top down. It should be coming from the people that maybe it doesn't affect overall and it doesn't matter. The compassion should be going towards these kids and these families because people don't know what's going on in other people's homes and behind closed doors. And it's not really everyone's business. And the threshold is so low to qualify and the paperwork is actually kind of prohibitive a lot of times to families. So, but yeah, that's all. And yes, my kids are, you know, happy to be at the school. Well, you know, technically.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? So if no, we're gonna officially close, uh, public comments and we will resume.
Just following up. Thank you for those public comments, everyone. Um, just a few key items to respond to some of what was asked and stated. Um, on, in the order that they were presented, um, around the students in the elementary school is true that, uh, in most, um, cases, the principals have met over the summer. They made a collective decision, um, in order to keep the students in their classrooms to be able to minimize transition wherever possible. Um, to just be able to minimize the amount of time and being able to clean and disinfect the rooms and to mitigate transmission, uh, with the students that are younger children. Obviously, in the middle school and the high school, that's impossible to do. Um, that, that is a decision that was made in order to minimize that transition, uh, and, and make sure that we're trying to do the best that we can with not increasing the rate of possible infection with people in our schools. Um, we recognize the challenge with, as the year goes on and temperatures and that there are going to be some times where the weather is inclement and we cannot send students outside. But I can tell you from the discussion with the principals and the administrative team and the teachers, that our goal is going to be to have our students go out as often as possible. Um, whenever it's possible, give the students the opportunity to go outside to have that recess, to be able to engage and get out of the classroom setting. That being said, we recognize it's a challenge. Um, we've come a long way in the past year, uh, year and a half. And, um, I am sure that as the year goes on, there will be more evolution of the plan as we continue to lean into what's new this September. That is different than what was even possible in June, just a few months ago. Um, so as a result of that, I, I do encourage parents that if you have a specific question related to a specific school, contact your building principal. Um, those decisions are being made there. Um, and they may be able to give you the best insight. Uh, and I would start with that conversation at that level. Uh, the next point that was brought up as a question or comment was in regards to the windows, uh, and the fans. So, um, we are well-versed in what the CDC guidance is and we do know that the CDC recommends increasing ventilation as much as possible. That's why we have the Univent system, um, which was operational last year. And we maximize the air exchanges and the airflow in all of our spaces. Now we have a new ventilation system that Mr. O'Brien has shared with us and with the board and with the public that is getting eight to 10 air exchanges per hour in all of the locations. Um, in addition to that, most, um, actually all windows across the district are, um, no longer double hung windows, which means like in our homes, they don't slide up and down. Um, they tilt inwards. And that's because under state law, um, there are new requirements when you replace windows from a safety standpoint to ensure that students, people cannot fall out the window. Um, as a result, box fans in the window are essentially useless. So although the CDC recommends that, um, that is actually completely fruitless in our efforts. And, um, we know that because we've tried it. Our teachers have tried it and it does not increase the airflow. What increases the airflow is the Univents exchanging the air, um, per hour. We have a brand new system for that. So we are far ahead of 95% of the districts across the state. So that's a huge win for us. Um, we do have fans in the classrooms. And last year, uh, we've talked about extensively with the Montclair Health Department, with the district physician, looking up guidance, um, speaking with specialists in the field, whether or not it would be permissible for us to utilize fans in classrooms, uh, whether it's a box fan, um, whether it's the fans that we have that are mounted to the walls that have been installed years ago in our classrooms. Um, and at the time, the recommendation was not to use them. Um, and understandable with the concern of potential, um, movement of potential aerosols. Um, what I referenced earlier was our consultation and communication with the VEA, the Verona Education Association, to talk about whether or not at this point in time, if that, uh, comfort level has changed and what would cause that change. More research, more guidance from the medical professionals, uh, recommendations from other, uh, air quality specialists, um, teachers' comfort level, parents' comfort level around the fact that more people are getting vaccinated, understanding more about the, the, the air quality. Um, so that's why, um, the Montclair Health Department does not weigh in on it. Um, and that's why we did consult with them in regards to the use of fans because the CDC did not explicitly state that. So we're having ongoing conversations. So we're having ongoing conversations around that. And as we know more, we'll be able to communicate it. We want everybody to be as comfortable as possible. But at the same time, we also want people to, all of our people, to be safe in our schools. And, Mr. Cruz, is there anything that you feel like you would like to add? Or in clarification? Or are you just going to continue to follow up on the lunch piece based on everything we've heard and then we'll follow up at a future meeting?
Yes, so I think, at this point, we'll definitely follow up. And just, just based on the public feedback on meals, I, I definitely see that, that point. I'll look at also connecting with, with Cedar Grove to, to actually, in fact, get some feedback on what changes actually took place versus now that they've participated in the National School Lunch Program. And honestly, if it's actually a win and isn't, is not, it's something that everyone could live with, not fundraising with meals and, and it's a sacrifice for a year. And, and, and the public, the basic, the community supports it. I think we could actually continue having the dialogue and discussion and, and actually see the options that we have ahead of us. Yeah, thank you.
So if there is nothing else, we do need to adjourn back into private session where we're going to be discussing personnel items and negotiation items. And I need a motion to resolve Resolution Number 9 to go back into public session. So move private session, I'm sorry. Moved by Mrs. Strappi.
I second that, Mrs. Priskow.
By Mrs. Priskow. And just to be clear, there'll be no action taken tonight on any of those discussions. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So we will do that. And at this point, I'm gonna call to adjourn the meeting. It is 8:22. And the next meeting is Tuesday, September 28th, and 7 o'clock for the public session. And if we are going to livestream for that one, it'll, a notice will go out and it'll be publicized. And the in-person will be here in the auditorium. Thank you and have a good night.